It's been an interesting year between 12 months, and that's really what we're at about now. Between COVID and then the CARES Act, and then now the vaccination rollout, and how we worked with our, whether state partners or local community partners, or our governmental partners to accomplish all three of those. I certainly think over the past month, since Mr. Henry requested to use our system to the enrollment, things have certainly changed in the conversation. And as our community learns more facts about how things work, that has also helped. And our communications team has been absolutely critical, not just in how they've communicated the message, and how they've supported the state, but even out at the state site itself, or out at the vaccination site itself, among many others. But the communication team has really been critical in that process. So I just want you to be aware of that. And because we don't want to keep Mr. Henry here any longer than possible, and instead have him out doing the work of vaccine distribution, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Good morning, commissioners for the record. My name is Chuck Henry, Director of Sarasota County Health and Human Services. I want to start out just first by thanking you as a commission for your continued support. There's a lot you do, both out front and behind the scenes, that help our efforts and make things a lot better. So I just wanted you to know how much I appreciate that. I know all your inboxes have been piled full over the last month, and you've generously shared some of that with me to respond to. So I know it's not been an easy month, but I appreciate your efforts truly. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Lewis and the county team. And he mentioned briefly the yeoman's effort that the communications team is doing, embedding with my team, and helping us get messaging out to the community, but also super-strong support from emergency management, IT facilities, libraries, and many others across the county that are pitching in and helping out. So we couldn't do it without the total team assistance, so many thanks there. And finally, to my Health and Human Services staff, who never waivers when I ask them to go do vaccines, even though their job may be something totally different, or help out at different clinics. We couldn't continue forward without their assistance. And many, many volunteers throughout the community have joined our vaccine teams and help us out at the site, as well as the Minnesota Medical Reserve Corps, which is a group of volunteers that help out. So I just wanted to get those acknowledgements out right at the beginning. So I'll move on to data now, just as a way of a quick update. Total cumulative cases so far since the beginning of the COVID outbreak, we're at 25,573 in Sarasota County. These were, these are confirmed data as of yesterday. Hospitalizations, 1,192, deaths at 675. 348 of those are linked to elder care facilities, and so that's about 52%. So 25,573, just started at the top, total cumulative cases, 1,192 hospitalizations, 675 deaths. 348 of those were 52% linked to our elder care facilities. So we're really pleased to see vaccines finally making a pretty big dent in that community. There's still a few more to go in our community, but they're working hard to make sure that all of those residents and staff that want to be vaccinated are covered. The percent positivity on the 14-day average is finally back down below 5. It's at 4.82%, which is really good to see, and continues to trend downward. So does our case rate. The 100, cases per 100,000 population, 14-day average is now down to 363. Also continues to trend down and good to see. Current hospitalizations are at 75. COVID-positive patients across our four acute care hospitals. That also is trending down. I think we were up in the 140s through the holidays. And over the summer, we peaked at about 168, so it's great to see that coming down. 17 of those cases are currently in the ICU. I did want to talk just for a moment, while this is great news and the trends are good post-holiday, to see it beginning to trend down instead of continuing up. There's still virus in the community. It's still circulating. It's at lower levels than it was a month ago. But I want to encourage all of our citizens to continue what they're doing and don't relax. Vaccine is just in the early phases of rolling out. And you'll see on the next slide, we're, I think, around just under 12% of the total population vaccinated, so we have a journey to go there. So I want to encourage people to continue social distancing, continue masking when they can't social distance, continue the increased sanitation and cleaning, continue to wash hands vigorously and often, and then, of course, stay home when we're sick. Those are the key things that we've learned over the last year, have really kept our community safe and healthy. And I think our community in Sarasota has done a really good job with all of those things. So I just want to encourage them to continue that. Even after vaccination, data's still out on, certainly the vaccines keep you from becoming ill and reduce the severity of the illness or prevent it. But the science is still studying whether or not you could still pass on the virus or acquire it with or without the vaccine. So I think we'll get some answers to that from CDC in the coming months. But again, these are new vaccines, so they continue to study them. Moving on to the vaccine update, and again, this data is as of yesterday. Total vaccines given in Sarasota County is about 50,650. First doses is 34,649, second doses 16,001. I know that number's probably significantly higher because the data lags several days. And the reason for that is the clinic, for instance, will run all day today at Sarasota Square Mall for my operation. The end of the day, within, we try within 24 hours to get all of that data uploaded to Florida shots. There's some kind of tech magic that happens that takes about 24 hours before that's uploaded to the state data, and then gets put out in the public report. So there is a couple of days lag, but this is the most current data as of yesterday. Total population vaccinated, 11.8%. And about 75% of the vaccines given in Sarasota County total have gone to individuals 65 and over, the remainder to frontline healthcare workers.
If I can interrupt you, Chuck, one minute. This is great, these last two slides. And next week, we don't meet, and you probably would have done it anyway. But if you could just send the commissioners these two slides, again, updated, because these are the most frequently asked questions.
We can certainly do that.
And also, do we have the percent of 65 and up population that's vaccinated? Not that last number.
It's about...
Because that's obviously the first stage that we're trying to get through, right?
Yeah, I think...
And what happens when we complete the vaccines for 65 and up? We still have a way to go, I'm just curious.
We still have a way to go. And, you know, we're still in priority 1A, and when, which includes frontline healthcare workers, those over 65, and residents and staff at our long-term care facilities. So we still have a ways to go to get through this. In Sarasota County, we have 160,000, according to the latest data, residents over the age of 65. So that's quite a big number to work through. And I think we're in the neighborhood of about 24% of our residents over 65 vaccinated so far in Sarasota County.
Mr. Henry, you just said you're the medical guy and all the equipment. You're not going to be held accountable. I have the same problem. I've already made the first mistake of the day, and that was to not recognize Commissioner Dietrich, who was on this other piece of equipment. So there you go.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Chuck, for upping our viewership on the Al Mayo News Network, because some people tune in just for your portion. What we're hearing these, this week, is people are having a very positive experience at Sarasota Square Mall. They leave very pleased. They're in and out quickly. They feel well cared for. The big question is, you know, doses, doses, and how we can improve that. But I have two questions before that. How long will our testing sites remain open? Because I think it's great that they're still open. If anyone has a question as to whether they're infected or not, they can go for free with no appointment, be tested in very quickly, because I know the lines are short now. So how long are we going to keep that wonderful free service open?
So first, I need to acknowledge those sites are run and operated by Department of Emergency Management at the state level through contracts. And so we would like to see them stay there as long as COVID is an issue in our community. But I don't have complete control over that. I will tell you that the number of people testing over the last three months, and I just happened to have been asked this question yesterday by one of the cities, so I looked it up. We've been averaging between 2,000 and 2,500 tests a day between, not just those sites, but all people reporting tests in Sarasota County. That's up from the August, September, October timeframe, when it was 1,000 to 1,500 tests a day. So a lot of people are taking advantage of being tested. And I think that helps drive our numbers down, because people have learned if they have symptoms, go get tested so that you know whether or not you need to isolate.
Well, the sign-up has, since we've lent the county operation, has been very smooth and well-received also. But after we finish with the 65 and above target group, which we're not there yet, what would be, what's the next tier to be served?
That's a great question. And again, I anticipate getting directives either from our state surgeon general or through another executive order from the governor on what tier 1B will look like. I can anticipate it, including those high-risk occupations, such as teachers, law enforcement, transportation drivers, maybe grocery store workers. And I'm just throwing these out based on what I'm seeing around the nation in terms of the next tier. But I'll have to wait and see what the directive is. As we work through that group, then I expect it to begin to open up more to general population, which will take us through a large part of the summer.
Okay, and lastly, what are the chances, and it's just a guess on your part, what are the chances that our doses will be increased? Is manufacturing up, distribution up? I know we kind of doubled, didn't we? It was 3,500, this week it was 7,000, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Hopefully, that's a trend.
So one week does not a trend make, I like to say. But I'm hopeful, and I believe it will increase as the state gets more vaccine in. They'll be distributing that out to the counties. The data is being put together now, certainly, given the number, the percent of our population, 37% over the age of 65. I think we have the second-highest percentage of population over the age of 65 in the state of all counties. So they're beginning to look at that and adjust vaccine doses. As long as they're getting the vaccine in, I would expect ours to continue to increase. And then, in the larger plan, as I've talked about before, once I have the vaccine available to support that, what I'm calling central location at Sarasota Square Mall for five to seven days a week, then we can begin to talk about doing more localized events, pop-up events, working with local city governments to do events with the additional vaccine to get it out even more quickly.
Well, here's one concern of mine. As we, you know, have people like Publix and CVS and whatever private industry volunteer to help, that always sounds great in the first newspaper article. But then, does that dilute doses that we would be distributing? Are we just going to have more distributors and the same amount of doses? So I don't even know if that, the end result of that is being helpful.
It's a great question. And what I've seen so far, and I have to couch this in, the state has very limited vaccines, and the governor reached out to Publix to try to create more outlets. But that wasn't because the state had more vaccines. So what's happened so far is that if Publix comes online in a county, they subtract whatever that number of doses given to Publix is from the county allotment scheme. So it doesn't really add more vaccine to the county. It just adds more distribution slots. I do believe, though, now that they're bringing onboard a national direct ship pharmacy program, that I'm hopeful that the vaccine allotments going to pharmacies will come direct from the national level and not eat into the state's allocation. So therefore, the state will be able to continue to allocate significant amounts to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kutsinger, you're next.
Thank you, Chuck. We have shared some emails with you, but very few of them, not all of them. But also some positive ones here recently, so thank you for that. And the other thing I want to just reiterate is how important it is to folks when you've responded personally to them. So thank you for taking the time. I know how busy you are, but you've, I think almost everyone that I've sent to you, you've responded to them personally. Thank you for that. It means, it means a lot to people. Could you, could you just address the state registration system in contrast? Or, you know, how should people look at that versus our system? I know I was quite surprised when that came out. I think it created a lot of confusion. I'm not sure what happens to people when they get on that list. Is it communicated to us? Should people sign up for both lists? What should they do? Could you speak to that and make that real clear for us?
So the, the state stood up a registration system about a week ago. And that registration system was intended to ensure that there was a registration process available for all 67 counties, because not every county had a system in place. We do have a system in place, thanks to all of you using the Everbridge system. And we've encouraged all of our citizens to register in that and get in the queue for vaccines. We haven't changed from that direction. We're encouraging citizens to stay in the Everbridge system. They can register in the state system. It's my understanding right now, because, because we're actively using a different registration system. Anybody that registers in the state system goes into a, for lack of a better term, a spreadsheet. And then we can download that data to our county and add it to our list as we work through our list. We've been encouraged, if we have an existing waitlist, to work through that waitlist before we get to the state's data from their site and begin pulling that down. So, you know, my message to citizens is make sure you're in Sarasota County's registration system if you want to be in our vaccine queue. People that register in the state system, you know, we will eventually pull those lists down. And as we work through our list, look at those and make sure that, if there's people that haven't already received it, that we get to them. So it's not a waste of time, but it's just a different system that's not directly connected with ours.
So what I hear you saying, it's better for them to register on our system? Because if they do just the state system, they're going to be on a spreadsheet somewhere, and we're not going to, that's not going to be communicated to us. They're not even going to be on our list at this point?
Eventually, we will pull down the data from the state system, and they'll be added to the end of our list. But they're far better off just to register in our system right up front.
Okay, thank you for that. When people end up getting the vaccines from one of these pharmacies, from Publix or Walmart, but they've been on our list, and so they no longer need the vaccine, then when they get the notice from us, we don't know that, do we? Do we, that's not communicated to us? We're not aware whether or not they've received the vaccine?
We do not have direct awareness, short of downloading the statewide database and then trying to match it with names, which is quite labor-intensive. We are asking citizens, if they're on our list and waiting, and they receive the vaccine somewhere else, go back into your Everbridge account and delete the account, or change the status to receive vaccine if you're interested in receiving a second dose here somewhere. But that really helps us, because one of the issues we're having with our database, and I think they're having it with databases all over the state, is we send out appointments, and then 20% or so decline or don't show up because they've already gotten the vaccine but haven't told us. And so, you know, we're now overbooking a little bit to try to compensate for that, because I don't want to put all the staff and volunteers out there to do 2,000 doses and have 1,800 people show up. You know, I want to do the maximum I can do every day to get vaccine out to our community.
Now, that was my question, is, you know, does that get us, delay us when people are already getting the vaccine, they're on our list, we're giving them appointments? It takes, I think, three reminders to them if they haven't responded. Is that right? I think three reminders go out?
So we do have a smaller group that we don't get a response from, and we're looking into trying to contact them to find out, or do they just not understand the system or what's going on there? And so we're concerned about that group. We have a larger group that says not available. So they actively respond that they're not available for the appointment given, or they decline the appointment given. And so those are the ones that we're going to say, after three declines or three not availables, we won't take them off the list, but we're probably going to move them to the back of the list so that we can keep moving to get vaccine out to everyone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of quick, just other couple of quick things. Sarasota was not included in the Publix distribution for some reason. But what I'm hearing you say is that actually is not taking away from the amount of doses we're getting. People on our list are still going to be on the list, even though Publix is not doing it here in Sarasota County.
Publix has a separate registration process, so, and I am hearing rumors that they're very close to coming live into Sarasota and Manatee County. So their intent, I think, is to come across the state. And I don't know if that's going to be next week or the following week, but I think it's close. When they do, they have their own registration system. They release appointments on Friday. People get on the computer and try to snag one of those systems. It's not connected with ours, but it creates additional neighborhood-level outlets for individuals to seek vaccines.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moran?
That's a perfect segue into my questions, Chuck, on this. And first off, thank you to you and your staff. I can't stress it enough. I know I've put some healthy pressure on this, and it's genuine, and it's in good faith, and it's not directed at you. I can't say it enough. But again, perfect segue, is the state, it's taken over a year before the state came online with an enrollment system. So what that led to was people being very reactionary, municipalities throughout this state, trying to come about with their own enrollment systems, which we did. I've already railed on that in the past, of the timing of that and how it was addressed to us was atrocious, if you ask me. So here's the reality of what's going on. The reality of what's going on is people are literally sitting on their computers and enrolling on every single enrollment software, website they can possibly get their hands on, all over the state. They then wait, and all of a sudden, they get a phone call from somewhere in northeast Florida that, hey, you're on the list. They jump in their car, they drive hours and hours, go get the vaccine, drive back to Sarasota County. My first question is, is that number on the bullet point, the percentage of total vaccines given to those age 65 and above 75%? So when they went to northeast of Orlando, three hours away, and came back, are you counting that in the number that are vaccinated in our community that the assumption is that we did it?
So I believe these numbers come from the state's combined list, data list. And I think they're sorted out by zip code of residence. So if they're a Sarasota County resident, it gets counted in these numbers, regardless of whether they got the vaccine in another county or at Publix or from us.
Okay, because the perception, as you can imagine with that bullet point, is that you lived in Sarasota County, we have 75% of our vaccines were done here. The state didn't do them here. And that's not, I'm not speculating, that's not a fantasy conversation. This is a real-life example. These folks drove three hours in traffic for a 3:00 PM appointment, and then drove three hours back, because they have their name on literally every list that they can get their hands on. So now what the obvious eighth-grade education could figure out is their name is on 20 lists throughout the state. So when you're grabbing your list, and you're calling them up, and you say, hi, Mrs. Jones, it's game time for you, and you're ready to come in for your vaccination, they say, no, I'm all set, I got mine in northern Florida. What are you plugging into our system and saying?
So if we get the feedback from them, and they have the ability to give us some comments that they've already received the vaccine, then we can change their status in the system so it shows that they've received their first dose. You know, my concern is the ones that just decline and don't give us any feedback, and we don't know why. And that's why we're, after three attempts, we'll move them to the end of the line so that we can keep going.
Okay. I'll save, Mr. Chairman, I'll save my stuff. A lot of my emergency management stuff that I have on my commissioner reports at the end, we can get into that. I don't want to bring Chuck about into that. We can talk with Rich later. Thank you.
Commissioner Ziegler?
Chuck, I'll try to go through this as quick as possible. Do you know if the vaccine supply is distributed based on the age of the population? Or are they doing vaccine distributions? And I'm talking about the state allocation to the counties. Is it based on total population or by 65 and up population?
So again, I'm not part of the team that makes that allocation. But my understanding is they initially started out based on total population, and about two weeks ago began shifting to taking into account the percent of population over 65.
Which should that, that should disproportionately benefit us, because we're such an older community? I mean, I know, and when I worked for Vern Buchanan, it was the number-two oldest congressional district in the entire country. And so I believe that'll probably help us, right, going forward?
Yes, it should provide more vaccines, as would be appropriate, given the, you know, we have the, I believe, the second-highest percentage of population over the age of 65 in the state here in Sarasota.
Okay, great. Another question, the 50,000 right there, total vaccines. So just to be clear, that is what you've given out, what SMH has given out, what other counties have given out? And someone just basically marked that there are Sarasota County residents, is that correct?
And also including the state teams that have been, and drugstores have been working on our long-term care facilities, correct?
Yeah, so, okay, all of that's lumped in there. Whether you specifically did it or not, right, whether your team did it or not?
Right, in fact, the vaccines that have come to the health department are obviously far below that number.
All right, great. And then, let me just understand, because you mentioned law enforcement maybe being one of those specialized categories. Were they not included in the first responders at the very beginning?
Well, the language from the governor's executive order was very specific. It's, it used the language frontline healthcare workers, not first responders. And so therefore, no, law enforcement has not been included in that initial group.
What about firefighters? I thought I was, at the beginning, I thought I was...
So if they're fire medics, most, most fire departments run where everyone is an EMT, paramedic, and a, as we know, traditional first responder to do first aid and assist EMS. And so, yes, they were included as frontline healthcare workers, but not law enforcement.
That's interesting, and that's okay. Status of Publix, I just saw Manatee County is going to be coming online with Publix. You're saying that's coming shortly?
I've seen some emails that indicate that it's coming pretty rapidly to Sarasota as well. I just don't have the exact timing.
Okay. South County location for vaccine distribution? I know the mall has really helped with some of the complaints or requests that we've had from citizens. But what's the status on South County? And specifically, what I thought was interesting is how much vaccine you can actually handle at the mall? And what are your thoughts? And what's really your, you know, what's your thought process on why we're not expanding to some of these other locations? Can you explain that?
I'll stick with what I continue to say, and that's when, when I have enough vaccine that's coming regularly to support that centralized county site, up to seven days a week, then I can begin taking the extra vaccine and doing work in the cities and in neighborhoods and with communities that would like us to come. And so I don't think we're there yet. I think the 7,000 doses this week got us quite a bit higher than we have been. If that continues, we'll get there pretty rapidly. I can tell you that the city of Longboat, the city of Venice, the city of Northport, I talk to them every week. They're all very anxious to have events in their communities. They're all staffed up and have identified locations and have people lined up to help us. So it would really be a good thing for me, because, you know, I'm pretty staff-heavy at the mall to run that operation. But if I have extra vaccines, and I can rely on a city to help staff the vaccination pod, then we can really extend our ability across the county and get even more vaccine out.
So can you give a little bit more insight in terms of why would you not, you know, you're saying, hey, let's keep it at the central location at the mall, right? And let's maximize the use of that facility as much as we can before we branch off somewhere else? Can you just explain logistically or operationally, why do you make that? Why is that your position? Because what I've told citizens is, look, this stuff needs to be cooled. You need to have specialized equipment for it. So when you start expanding, you don't want to expand and have like 20 or 30 doses in 40 different spots. But what's your reasoning for that? If you could just explain that a little bit more?
So you are correct. We want to make sure that we don't waste a single dose, because we want to get it into arms. Primarily, the state has asked every county to identify a central location that they can feed vaccine to, that can run up to seven days a week. And so we're, we're marching forward with that endeavor, and I think we're really close. The other complication, because we in Sarasota have chosen to create a queue, to put people in line, as we start branching out to cities, we have some decisions to make. And so I, for example, I could go to Northport. But if I just pull everybody off the list, it could be that all 2,000 people that are scheduled for that event come from North Sarasota and not any from Northport. So that doesn't make sense to me. What would make sense to me would be to target zip codes around Northport and pull those from the top of the list. But that's discussions we have to have. You know, some citizens may see that as jumping the line. And so I believe that the only way to try to come in the middle there is to make sure we have a central... is to make sure we have a central site operating five to seven days a week, putting out a lot of vaccine and pulling off the priority list before we start branching out to try to keep it fair to everyone and then also to make it more accessible as soon as we can.
Okay, a couple more. What's your feelings about our supply considering our elderly population in Sarasota County? So, 65 and up vaccine in Sarasota County compared to some of the other areas? I mean, do you feel comfortable with the supply we've gotten? I know no one's happy with the supply we have.
Yeah, I think if you ask any of my colleagues, they would say, none of us would say we have enough.
But as a comparison?
But I think we've been consistently getting vaccine. I think if you really analyze the percent of our population over 65 and the sheer number of citizens we have over 65, then we should probably receive more vaccine than we have been getting. But I also understand it's a really complex process for the state to take whatever they're getting from the federal government and figure out how much is going to the drugstores, how much is going to the long-term care, how much can go to every county. And so, sure, I'd like to see more. And our number-one goal is to get it out as rapidly as we get it.
And this is where I think the commission, you know, I'd like to see us maybe do some sort of a letter or something to Jared Moskowitz, just reminding him of how many people are 65 and up in Sarasota. I don't know if there's an appetite for that, but I think that would be beneficial for the commission to just urge them and remind them where we're at as a community. Now, two more things real quick. What other pain points do you have besides supply?
Well, supply is the largest in terms of vaccine. And then, right behind that is making sure I have the staff available to run these operations and do them safely and efficiently. So, you know, having enough vaccine to begin to get help from the cities to branch out will be helpful there as well. We have lots of volunteers that are willing to come help out. But scheduling volunteers, validating licenses becomes a whole other work in itself, but one well worth doing, because the volunteers have been wonderful.
Okay. Lastly, if someone wants to get the vaccine, you know, we have our system. You're saying the state has a system. You're saying Publix has a system, once Publix comes online. What would you recommend to our citizens? If someone wants to get a vaccine, because I'm just imagining four computers, kind of what Commissioner Moran mentioned on a computer. I've actually seen pictures on Facebook of people waking up at 6:00 a.m. and trying to get. So, should they be going to our system just trying to get it? Should they be going to ours and Publix? Should they be having, you know, Sarasota County on one computer and Hillsborough and Manatee on the other computers? I mean, what would you recommend to a citizen that really wants to get this vaccine to do?
So, you know, my recommendations to citizens, you know, every individual is different. You know, if the reason you want to get the vaccine is because you have a number of underlying health conditions or other things that make you really vulnerable, then it may be that your best move is just to be patient a few more weeks until it's available at the drugstore, because you may be able to go there and get it in a small, in an environment with less people. You come to a max, you know, a max vaccination site like we have at the mall. We work really hard to try to keep everybody spaced six feet apart. We watch the total number of people in the room based on the square footage and manage all that. But we can't avoid the fact that we're putting 1,000 people through a day or 2,000 people through a day, depending on the event that are working through. And so, you know, I think if you really want to get a vaccine, it doesn't hurt to register in Sarasota County and Manatee County and Charlotte County to check the drugstores. If you really want to just take your time to do that every day, if it's that important to you. But I will also say, if you just, once you register with Sarasota County, if you're patient, we're going to work through. I think we're up to about 11,000 now in the line number. And as more vaccines come online, I think we'll move through the 65 and above fairly rapidly, especially if additional outlets come online and they maintain the allocations to us. You know, that's probably my other concern with the drugstore allocations and with city events, whatever city those are. I welcome more vaccine coming into our community, absolutely. I have concerns sometimes when the event happens, but they take the allocation out of my county one. So, we're not really gaining anything as a community. We're just moving it around different places. So, you know, I think some of that happens now, early on, when vaccine's so limited. But I'm looking forward to the day that there's enough vaccine. We can do all of those things without impacting the allocations.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Chuck.
I have something, but I'll wait. Commissioner Kutsinger?
Just a couple more quick questions, Chuck. You mentioned you're at, say, 11,000. Just to give a little hope, can you speak to the capacity at the Sarasota Square Mall? I mean, what, how many doses can you give a day there? And, you know, how quickly will we move through this line if we do get the vaccine?
So, you know, first I want to say Sarasota Square Mall has been fabulous and I appreciate the county's help securing that. And the mall management has been wonderful working with us. The space that we're in right now is about 13,000 square feet. And we have a capacity to do, the max is probably 2,000 a day. We consistently do 1,500 to 2,000, depending on the amount of vaccine coming through. We are potentially moving to a different space in the, probably three to four more weeks. That's a larger space and our capacity could increase there, depending on the availability of vaccine, if we wanted to do that. You know, the other hand, if we're able to do 1,500 to 2,000 a day and have more vaccine to go out and begin to do some of these geographically located events, then maybe that's the best direction for us to go.
And you're looking at maybe being open seven days a week there?
Well, if we have the vaccine, I don't want to leave vaccines sitting in the freezer. We want to get it into arms. So, if I can, if I have the vaccine and I have the staff, yes, we'll run seven days a week.
So, you know, 10,000, 15,000 doses a week, just from that centralized location, possibly?
That's possible. I have to, everyone has to remember with the two vaccines that are approved right now, they all require two doses. So, I'm doing 2,000 today, first doses. So, four weeks from now, I'll have to do 2,000 second doses somewhere, probably at the mall. And so, it'll be a balance between first and second doses, which is why as more vaccine comes online, the ability to stretch into the cities with their help will be useful.
Thanks, Chuck. And I just want to comment on, you know, the county commission, we're coming alongside you in every way we can. Obviously, and we want to make sure that you know that whatever you need, you talked about pain points, whatever you need, we want to be there. And I want to just commend the county for the work they did on standing up the registration system. That was excellent work. It's very proactive and it helped us get ahead of the curve a little bit. I think we forget about the call center. There, you know, the call center stood up and they're handling several thousand calls every day. And that's an important, really important part of this, because a lot of folks aren't capable of getting in front of a computer, don't have one, so they can call. And of course, taking the initiative and getting to the mall, renting that space, doing everything we can. So, Chuck, thank you for the work you're doing and make sure the county knows whatever you need. We want to be there.
Okay, I've got a few things. Commissioner Kutsinger just did a lot of what I was going to do and say as the chair. But first of all, thank you for everything you do. And for the listening public, commissioners aren't asking all these questions just because they like to hear themselves talk. That may be a little bit of it, but it's mostly because they're going through the hundreds, if not thousands, of emails we're getting and culling from that the questions that you all are asking. With that said, I want to just make a couple of comments. First of all, before I make my comments, Commissioner Ziegler, I'd like to capture your thought about a letter. And it comes from the chair or not from Mr. Henry. Capture that in a motion so that we can get that going.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of County Commission, the chairman of the Board of County Commission in Sarasota County relay a message to the governor reminding them just how high our population is of those 65 and up and encouraging them to consider that as they make future vaccine supply allocations.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Ziegler, a second by Commissioner Moran. Any comments from any commissioner? Commissioner Kutsinger, I see you reaching. Go ahead, buddy.
I'd like to add something about the fact that not only do we have that population, but we have another 150,000 who are here from up north right now, who are also, you know, many of those folks are three, four-month residents who are also eligible for the vaccine. So, we have not only our population, but a whole lot more.
That's an excellent point. Any other thoughts about this? All right, we have the motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? I didn't hear any. Chair votes aye, so that letter will go out over my signature. Staff's going to help me draft that as they usually do. With that said, I want to make a couple of points clear. We get a lot of emails. The chair, whether it's me or the previous chair or future chairs, when an email comes to all five commissioners, they're free to answer it, but it's the chair's role to answer it on behalf, receipt of it, on behalf of the commission. We've actually set up a pretty extensive, because there's so many of them, where they get responses. They appear to be coming from me. They're coming from me on behalf of the entire commission. And we rotate through a series of replies, which are updated. That's to start with. The second thing that I still get hit with, and I'm a bit surprised, that somehow commissioners are jumping the line. So, let me be exacting. I'm a numbers guy. Let me be exacting. You have three commissioners that are over 65. You have two commissioners that are over 70. I'm not going to get into any additional health problems, because I don't want to run afoul of the law. None of the commissioners and/or their spouses has been vaccinated, period. My number is 58,700 and I think 16. So, we would appreciate, accuse us, there's 100 different things to accuse us of, but please don't accuse us of that. With that said, I want to give a special thanks to you and to our staff, Chuck. It hurt my feelings she left the room, but I thought people were tuning into this to hear me. It turns out that Commissioner Ziegler, Dieter rather, said they're tuning in to hear you, as they should. Thank you. I hope they do listen. We put it at the beginning of the agenda, so you don't have to listen to the whole meeting. But this is critical, so thank you. I also want to thank, in addition to all our staff and all your staff and everyone, special thanks to the communications team. And I've gotten a lot of compliments that I have sent on their way. But I picked this one because it's both, has frustration in it, dissatisfaction, and then a compliment. But I think it captures, in a nice way, that fellow citizens talk to each other, the right thing. This comes, and it's almost two weeks old, but it's from Ms. Rochelle Delman. "I'm one of the countless senior citizens who reside in Sarasota County and have been extremely frustrated in my attempts to secure vaccination, which I still have not received." We hope she has received it since. "Despite my frustrations, I must tell you that I have been highly impressed by the confidence and kindness of the county's communication team. I have been able to secure help through your Facebook chat option, and that support has been incredible. I did want to single out the individual who has been so knowledgeable and patient. And when I asked her how I could provide feedback to her superiors, she asked me to inform you of the capable entire communications team that she manages, rather than providing her own name. Another selfless act. If Jamie is an example of your staff, kudos to all of you in the communications department. Your employees go the extra mile and I do appreciate their efforts at this difficult time." So, for the entire communications team, our entire staff, I selected this one out of many that I received, because there's frustrate, that's how you, please, that's how you handle your frustration. We get it. We know that you're frustrated, fearful, but this is one of the best ways to do it. Chuck, did you have another, you were back on the board?
Let me just mention something on that. Yeah, Chuck, I mean, there's different stages of this process. And there's various frustration levels with various stages when you're dealing with tens of, hundreds of thousands of citizens. I will tell you to a T, the experience, once they get there to that vaccine location and the experience citizens have had, I don't remember any complaints that I've gotten in terms of handling or working directly with your staff to get the vaccine and just the flow through, you know, Twin Lakes and the mall and that experience and just the professionalism of your staff and the customer service and the responsiveness and our communications team. I mean, that's where I would think that the most complaints would come from, because anytime you have humans dealing with other humans, it always, you know, can create problems. But thank you so much for making that a very superior and very positive experience, because that is a big deal. And we do hear it. And it's a lot easier for people to complain than for people to praise. And very few, very rarely do people get online to send a thank-you note to someone else. But when we get multiple thank-yous or multiple comments on that experience, I think that speaks volumes, so.
Perfect. Anything else for Chuck? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chuck.